Of a major city. Thank you, Mayor Hatcher.
Any other communication?
Mr. President. We all received in our mailboxes and again tonight at the caucus, um, the Hammond Parks Foundation is having an annual dinner, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Six P. M. Reception, seven P. M. Dinner. It's twenty-five in advance, thirty at the door, and the gentleman that brought us this in caucus, um, basically made it a point to tell us that the organization is looking for new and fresh blood. So, he asked us if we'd make the public aware of this, and the public is invited also.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
We all got a letter back, uh, right before Thanksgiving, uh, the Hammond Elderly at fifty-one-eleven Soul Avenue are having, uh, Christmas party on the nineteenth, and they're asking for donations. If people that haven't contributed, there are good people over there, and they could use donations. So, please give hardly this Christmas, you know. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I also would like to take the time to thank the outgoing mayor of the great city of Gary, Indiana, Karen Freeman Wilson, for naming a street after Malcolm X. Virginia Street will be named after Malcolm X. Salute you, Karen, for standing up, and we know what Malcolm X stood for. Thank you so much for naming the street after someone that was really dear to the African mu- community, African-American community, excuse me.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Item seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
Finance Committee will be reporting out nineteen thirty-one, and council as a whole will be bringing out nineteen twenty-six, nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen thirty-two, and nineteen thirty-three.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Uh, since we have a nice crowd here tonight, I'd like to let everyone know that there are community and crime watch meetings throughout the city in various different neighborhoods. Uh, if you have any questions about, uh, occurrences in your neighborhood, or you would like to meet the, uh, police officers who patrol your neighborhood, come out to one of those meetings. Uh, meet your neighbors and meet the police officers who patrol your neighborhoods. Uh, coming up on Tuesday, December seventeenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at six-thirty P. M. On Tuesday, January seventh, the Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW at fifty-eight-twenty Holman Avenue. That's at six-thirty P. M. The Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December nineteenth, seven P. M. At the Gene Shepherd Center. And, uh, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December nineteenth, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building on, uh, fourteen-oh-two one hundred seventy-third Street. That is at seven P. M. Uh, because, uh, we're beginning a new year, uh, several of the, uh, crime watch and community watch meetings will not be meeting in January. For those who are not familiar, I'd like to let you know that, uh, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will not meet in January. Uh, nor will Edison Community Watch at Edison School, nor will Edison Community Watch on the road at the Golden Manor Senior Apartments, uh, nor will Irving Community Watch at Irving School, and, uh, nor will the Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch, uh, meet in January. But mark your calendar for February and the months after that. Please come out and find out what's going on in your neighborhood, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you very much.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Item eight, ordinances for third and final passage. City Clerk Golick.
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-six sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number Two-Four-Three, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for two thousand and twenty.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage of nineteen twenty-six.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash twenty-six. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Add me as a co-sponsor of that particular ordinance. I shall move.
Noted by the city clerk to add Mr. Higgins as a sponsor. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
This two thousand and twenty grant is a comprehensive highway injury reduction program, which the purpose is for preventing highway injuries and fatalities. The amount of money for this grant is granted to the city of Hammond, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? City Clerk Rollcall.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nineteen twenty-six nine in favor, zero absent.
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-seven sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number Two-Four-Four, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for two thousand and twenty.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final s- final passage of nineteen twenty-seven, please.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Higgins for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash twenty-seven. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Add me as a co-sponsor of this particular ordinance. I shall move.
City Clerk will note that. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
This grant is for, again, two thousand and twenty. It's the Lake County Drunk Driving Task Force. Uh, the amount for this was eighty thousand dollars given to the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? City Clerk Rollcall.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Ordinance number nineteen thirty-one, and ordinance fixing these salaries for elected city officials for the city of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January one, two thousand and twenty, be ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move for final passage and adoption of ordinance number nineteen thirty-one.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash thirty-one. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Rollcall.
Ordinance nineteen dash thirty-two sponsored by Councilman Warpo, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city two thousand and nineteen budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move for final passage and adoption of ordinance number nineteen thirty-two.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash thirty-two. Any discussion?
Mr. President. This is basically what some refer to as the cleanup ordinance. No extra money's being spent. It's just re-appropriating end-of-the-year funds throughout the departments.
What's the total dollar amount?
Um...
Fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
No, it's one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Where'd that come from?
The ordinance itself.
I didn't see that one.
Any other discussion?
Thought it was fortunate.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Rollcall.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, nineteen dash thirty-two passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Ordinance nineteen dash thirty-three sponsored by Councilman Warpo, and ordinance enacting a proposed amendments to the user fee for the operation and maintenance of the city storm water system.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move for final passage and adoption of nineteen thirty-three.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash thirty-three. Councilman Warpo.
As, Mr. President, as most people are aware of, we've made it perfectly clear throughout the year that come two thousand and twenty, the, basically what we call the sewer department, I mean, I know it's storm water system for the city, but was gonna be unfunded by the budget. So, these are the proposed rate increases for residential, single-family, duplex, and three units, which are there, there are twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one. The rate, the monthly rate is going from five dollars to seven dollars and seventy-five cents, which is an annual increase from your tax bill of thirty-three dollars. Commercial buildings, which there are one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, is going from thirty-five dollars to ninety dollars, which, again, will go to the tax bill. Industrial, there's two sixty, going from thirty-five dollars to a hundred and sixty-two seventy-five. Commercial apartments, four through nineteen units, there are three hundred and nineteen of them, and they're going from fifteen dollars to sixty-two fifty. And the state-assessed utilities, there's two hundred and thirty-three of those that were taxed at twenty-five dollars and are going to a hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. As we stated in the caucus, and as we stated when this bill was introduced, these rates as is will fund the sewer department, which, again, will go unfunded under the two thousand and twenty budget. Without the sewer department, it would basically, we'd be left with broken sewers that would go unfixed or have to use council dollars to do it. I had a situation in the fifth district where a sewer clogged up, and they were out there about seven or eight days, round the clock unclogging it from a backup from a business. My point is, this raises the department funding of four, four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it still keeps us as one of the two lowest communities in the ra- community rates in our area. Did you have any other questions, Mr. President? Did I do all right?
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I think in caucus, what was discussed as it relates to this particular ordinance is that, um, other communities and towns have already increased, and so it's needed in this particular department. So, um, that is the reason for the increase, and certainly we don't wanna have situations come up where they can't do the necessary repairs throughout our city. So, for my constituents, that's why I'm voting in favor of it.
Mr. President. The sanitary sewer departments, the department that goes from north to south in our city, when they start up at the casino, and they work their way south going through the storm sewers, it takes them about ten years to get the entire system done. They go through and they do preventative ma- preventative maintenance, they televise the sewer to make sure there's no problem, and if they find them, they fix them. Sometimes there's problems that pop up in your districts, and we don't call up Councilman Rakos to say, hey, Councilman Rakos, we had a storm sewer collapse in the sixth district. It cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We need to take that from your gaming revenue. We have a fund set aside for emergencies like this that come up every single year, a- and it's funded out of this account. This account, when the property tax caps passed, literally zeroed out, this account. It's an important department, but more importantly, it's, it's the revenue we use when we have emergency sewer collapses, which haven't happened every single year. So, without this department, not only would we have to approach the district council people whenever we had issues like this pop up, we'd also wouldn't have the manpower that we need to start that ten-year process of televising and, and, you know, inspecting all three hundred miles of our storm water system. So, this is important. We all knew that when the property tax caps kicked in, that this department would, would go unfunded. We've been talking about this for the better part of a year. Uh, this is the proposal that was submitted to us by the Hammond Sanitary District. The part that was important to me was looking at the homeowner portion, which is twenty-five thousand of our customers are paying this. It goes up two dollars and seventy-five percents per month. That's it. It's a cup of coffee at Starbucks, what we're talking about, once per month. It's payable twice per year, uh, on each tax bill that's due. So, I hear people talk about percentages. This is going up a certain percentage, and it's like, okay, I get it, it's going up a certain percentage, but it's going up two dollars and seventy-five cents per month. That's what we're talking about for, by far, the majority of rate pairs are gonna be affected, two dollars and seventy-five cents per month. If you own a building, if you own industrial property, it's a different number for you. However, if you're a homeowner, which is ninety percent of the issues that we're worried about, two dollars and seventy-five cents per month payable twice per year. I don't know if anybody has any other questions on this.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
A much-needed department for sure. Mayor, how many trucks did they have for this, uh, sewer, when you do their line?
Uh, they have, Jack, hey, Jack, could you come up here real quick? This is Jack Smith. He's the department head, uh, in the Hammond Sanitary Sewer Department. He could give us more detailed answers about his department. How many, uh, employees do you have in the, I know it's a four million dollar budget we're talking about. Three quarters of the budget are for emergency repairs. And to give you an idea, last year in the second district, we had a storm sewer collapse between, in the second district, on Columbia and Michigan. That was what?
Three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Three hundred and ninety-one thousand, and it was down, we all remember, it was down for the better part of a month. We didn't approach Councilman Torres, say, hey, bad news, Councilman, you had a storm water, sewer collapse in your district. We covered it with the emergency fund. So, Jack, could you talk a little bit about the employees you have and the number of trucks, and how often you shoot repairs?
Uh, I have a total of sixteen employees. I have four factors. Two employees per truck, that's eight right there, not including our locate guy, and we have four guys on repair. Four guys on repair takes care of the whole entire city of Hammond, from, all the way south and north, from east to west. We have a total of four hundred city, uh, city miles of sewers. Four hundred, yep.
Was that right on the ten years?
We've got it down to seven.
Sorry, seven years. Four hundred miles.
You're doing an air company job. Make a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I don't know if you have any other questions, but this isn't, I realize that there's people watching, that this is new to, and people in the audience that probably haven't heard about this, but I know that the nine of you and, and the administration have been talking about this for the better part of six months, five months. So, this isn't a surprise to you, but I realize we're talking to an audience as well. So, I don't know if you all have questions, maybe you wanna eliminate for the audience, but I think the important parts that I wanna highlight is, we're one of the lowest rates, even after, if this rate is approved, we're one of the lowest in the region, for sure. There's only two communities lower to, lower than us, and they're both in the process of raising their rates. The two communities, funny enough, are Lowell, who doesn't have nearly the storm water capacity that we have, the storm sewers, and the other community is Gary, and I think that Gary's probably gonna be looking at changes in the way they do business. So, I, I would be surprised if we weren't the lowest before long.
Any other discussion?
And, um, I guess my question.
Councilman Higgins.
Uh, the sponsor of this ordinance, you said for commercial property, how much would the increase would be?
Commercial buildings and apartments with nineteen units would go from thirty-five to ninety.
So, Councilman Higgins, to try to justify this is, my house, I have a front yard that absorbs storm water, and I don't send a lot of storm water. Before this all happened, I own a commercial building. Uh, it's the building where Shoops is located in South Hammond, okay? My commercial building paid the same as my house for storm water fees. And yet, I have a big parking lot at Shoops, and we send a lot more water to the system than my house does. It doesn't really make a lot of sense for an industrial piece of property and a commercial piece of property and my house to pay the same rates for storm water fees. So, what we did was, using that rationale, we moved the homeowner up, two dollars and seventy-five percents per month, and then we moved the commercial buildings up a lot more. So, for my commercial building, I'm gonna be paying hundreds more per year, being honest with you. And then for industrial properties, which I imagine use even more water and put it into our system, they raised a lot more. So, for my commercial building, for instance, I'm gonna get a tax bill next year where my property taxes are gonna drop hundreds of dollars per year, maybe even a thousand dollars per year, because the tax caps kicked in, and then it's gonna raise the amount of this rate. So, it may raise a couple hundred bucks, but it's gonna drop by thousands. My homeowner bill next year is gonna drop by hundreds of dollars for sure, and then it's gonna go up two dollars and seventy-five cents per month. Okay? Nobody likes doing this kind of stuff, but let's keep it in perspective what we're talking about. We're talking about for a homeowner, two dollars and seventy-five cents per month. If, commercial property owners, they have a different complaint. I'm one of them, by the way, and I'm one of them that's gonna pay more next year under this plan, and I realize that. But, it's hard for me to justify why the building that houses Shoops pays the same storm water fee as my house. That made no sense, and an industrial piece of property, and that's what we're changing with this ordinance, if it's approved.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Mayor, I guess my question would be, you know how many commercial properties we have total in the city of Hammond?
It's on the list, Councilman. Councilman Warpo?
What he has?
How many pieces of commercial property, I know it's on that list.
You're... We have, okay, there's commercial buildings and apartments of plus, greater than nineteen units. There's one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, and then there's commercial apartment buildings of four to nineteen units, which are three hundred and nineteen of them.
Okay. And then, how, twenty-five thousand residential?
Twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one.
Those twenty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one are getting two dollars and seventy-five cent, eh, per month increase.
Which comes to thirty-three dollars.
Yes, sir, exactly.
A year.
The majority of Hammond residents are gonna be affected to the tune of two dollars and seventy-five cents. The few people that own commercial property or apartment complexes or industrial property, they'll have more complaints about this than the twenty-three thousand, six hundred and some odd. By the way, these numbers went through a lot of iterations. It's, I mean, a lot of changes to finally settle upon, we knew what we needed to raise, and we were trying to figure out the fairest ways so that the homeowners got hit the, the least, and the commercial properties carried a little bit more, and of course, the industrial properties carried the burden, 'cause they create way more waste than a house does.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Call for the vote.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Rollcall.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, nineteen thirty-three passes nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Item number nine, introduction of ordinances. Clerk Golick.
Ordinance nineteen dash thirty-five sponsored by the Hammond Plan Commission, and ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, being an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan for purposes of addressing conflicts of interest.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I move for final passage of Resolution nineteen R. Thirty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Higgins, second by Councilman Spatelli.
Mr. President has an ordinance.
Has an ordinance. Let's, I know.
Excuse me, first and second reading by title.
Nineteen dash thirty-five be passed on first and second reading, referred to where?
Council as a whole with a committee meeting scheduled the first Monday in January that the council meeting is scheduled, seeing that I won't be the councilman in January, but I will be working for the community. Fighter I am.
That would be January thirteenth at five fifteen.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
President Markovich, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Item ten, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution nineteen R. Dash thirty-two, a resolution appropriating money from the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of nineteen R. Thirty-two.
Second.
Mosted by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage and adoption of nineteen R. Thirty-two. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this is a fund that receives, uh, deposits of fees. Uh, the clerk can use the, uh, the money in the fund for improvement of record-keeping systems and equipment. So, I would like to, uh, move, or, uh, the clerk's office is requesting to move fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy, uh, dollars from the perpetuation fund to, uh, move fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars to the perpetuation fund that allows him to, uh, use the funds for record-keeping and equipment.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Add me as a co-sponsor to this particular.
So noted. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, rollcall.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, resolution passes nine in favor, zero absent. Uh, just for a point of clarification, at the end of the council meeting, we have what we call public expression. If anybody wishes to speak before the council on any item that came up tonight or in the future, you need to sign in, give your name, address, and, uh, what you wanna talk about. So, if anybody, if they're new to the council, you can sign in at the podium. Clerk Golick, item B.
Item B, Resolution nineteen R. Dash thirty-three sponsored by Councilman Rakos, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for assistance to the firefighter grant.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move for final passage, adoption of nineteen R. Thirty-three.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Rakos, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage and adoption of nineteen R. Dash thirty-three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd like to read the, uh, resolutions. Seemed to be some questioning caucus. Whereas the Hammond Fire Department, due to safety issues and evolving threats and hazards that exist to firefighters during active threat situations that require firefighters to go into harm's way to evac- evacuate those injured from the hazard area, and a definitive medical care requires certain equipment to handle these situations, and whereas this equipment includes basic ballistic protection for first responder, responding firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, and whereas currently a two thousand and nineteen assistance to firefighters grant, also known as AFG, is available from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and whereas this grant is awarded, would cover ninety percent of the cost of the new equipment, estimated to be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which would leave the city of Hammond's share at ten percent at twenty-six thousand. Whereas the city of Hammond must apply for, to be awarded these AFG grant funds, and the Hammond Fire Department wishes to make this grant application, requires the approval of the Hammond Council, be therefore resolved by the Hammond Council of the city of Hammond. The Hammond Fire Department be authorized to apply for two thousand and nineteen AFG for the purchasing, in, purpose of purchasing new ballistic equipment for the Hammond firefighters.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor of this ordinance.
I don't, I don't need anybody to add it to this.
Well, you don't have to want anyone to. I decided to be one, and you can't stop me from being one.
Point of order. If you want to talk, please address the chair.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I want to be a co-sponsor to any particular ordinance or resolution, I have that right as a councilman to do such. Furthermore, as it relates to the Hammond Fire Department, during my tenure, I have always supported the firefighters of this great city of Hammond. And to add on to that, there were issues that came up during the campaign that were not true. So let's make it clear that I love the Hammond Fire Department.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
It's got to be a joke, right?
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
Item C, Resolution 19R-34 sponsored by Councilmen Torres, Warple, and Rakels. A resolution of the Hammond Common Council in support of deferred action for childhood arrivals, also known as DACA, and the Dream Act.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final passage and adoption of 19R-34.
Second.
Mosted by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Warple. Councilman Warple, for final passage and adoption of 19R-34. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to, if possible, be a co-sponsor of this bill, add it to the list.
Let the clerk note it.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I likewise too would like to be added as a sponsor.
Councilman, City Clerk Golick, just go ahead and put down all councilmen down as sponsors.
Oh, wow. Ooh, that's amazing. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for clarity, and I hope the times and every other newscast is here, initially when I introduced this particular DACA to the council, I couldn't even get a second. So all of a sudden now, it's on the agenda. I congratulate all my colleagues for stepping to the plate and supporting something that's so vital to the entire nation.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs.
Yes, yes, Councilman Higgs, we appreciate that, and you were the first sponsor of this resolution. And some councilmen felt that the language was not appropriate at that time, so it needed to be changed. But you are welcome, of course, and you are a sponsor of this ordinance again. I just want to add that, of course, DACA is Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. That this resolution supports DACA and also the Dream Act, which is development, relief, and education for alien minors. These are young people that are brought here usually by their parents, seeking a better life, seeking the opportunities that this country offers, including economic opportunities. They sacrifice, this is the only country since a lot of them are brought in in their infancy and in the younger adolescent years, that they know. So if they were to be deported to their home country, they wouldn't know no other way of life except the American way of life or language. And even though Hispanics from Mexico to Central America and South America are usually right now is the main focus, there's 149 countries throughout the world that participate in the DACA program. They're from Europe, Scandinavia, Asia, the Middle East, all over the world, there are participants in this program. So it just not affects the Hispanic population. We are able to create, not only do they enjoy the American dream and live it, but they become skilled people. A lot of them professionals, including doctors, teachers, engineers, lawyers, and skilled laborers. So they contribute. The ordinance, I mean, the resolution says over $23 million a year. So they are, it is a myth that they participate in, that most of them are criminals, that somebody in the White House would like to have us believe, because they know they have to be careful to walk the fine line. Because if they violate, even a minor traffic violation, get cited for even a barking dog, that their chances of getting deported are greater than the normal people. So with this, I urge my colleagues to please support this resolution. I also want to thank the people that put a lot of work in this ordinance, the new language it has, including the mayor of the city, Attorney Estrada, which is right there in the audience, Linda Quino, Mike Santos, Carl Wolf, and Scott Holderson, which, and I know there's others, but those to my knowledge are the main ones. So a lot of work went this, and now that we have, I believe, the whole support of the council and the mayor, I encourage my colleagues to please support this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
He's being humble. I give him credit for staying on top of this and working with the mayor and Alfredo for staying on top of this and getting the language corrected that we had concerns about. And Pete, you deserve credit just like the rest of them.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, I applaud his efforts, but initially when it was presented, I wish he would have came forward and stepped to the plate and said, "Councilman Higgs," because I would have personally worked tirelessly to get it corrected if there was some language that you didn't appreciate or you didn't like in the particular one that was introduced in the beginning. However, we're at, we're here now, and hopefully you all will pass something that's going to be wonderful, that I am totally, totally in agreement with.
Mr. President.
Congratulations.
Mayor McDermott.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs, for your help on making this happen. We appreciate it very much. I do want to point out that I know that a lot of work was put into this resolution by Attorney Estrada, and I know, Councilman, you recognized him, but he really, I mean, he wasn't billing for this either. He did it out of the goodness of his heart. I don't think he was billing anyway. We'll find out, I guess. But Attorney Estrada worked tirelessly on this, along with the councilman, and took ordinance that there was some pushback on, and he made it acceptable to the council, and he made it acceptable to the mayor's office, and I think he's doing a fine job for the residents of Northwest Indiana. So I did want to take a second and thank him very much for stepping forward, Attorney Estrada. And I also want to point out that I'm married to an immigrant, and to think that if my wife's parents made a mistake when they naturalized her, that she would be threatened with deportation is horrifying to me. I can't imagine if Marissa was sent back to her homeland, she was born in Poland, like Councilman pointed out, she wouldn't know how to communicate with people, she wouldn't know, she's lived her whole life in America. So to think that people are afraid of this from our government is beyond disturbing. That's why I'm very glad that it appears that we're all getting behind this resolution. And, Mr. President, a lot of hard work was put into this resolution. I know that it's up to you all, but I think that if it was read out, I think that'd be great if Clerk Golick could possibly read the resolution. It's really, it was a fine piece of work done by Attorney Estrada, and if that's appropriate, I'd suggest a read. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, I would like it to be read as well, but before it's read, I also would like to point out that maybe the Human Relations Commission can start getting involved in some of these issues that affect human beings as well.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I ask that Clerk Golick read the resolution.
A resolution articulating the, in quotes, sense of the mayor and city of Hammond Common Council, unquote, urging the administration and Congress to protect DACA recipients and affirming support for all, excuse me, regardless of citizen status and immigration status. Whereas the program, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, known as DACA, was created through an executive action signed by President Barack Obama in June of 2012. And whereas DACA provides undocumented immigrants who were brought to the United States before 16 years of age, known as Dreamers, deferral of a removal action as an act of prosecutorial discretion, provided that they meet certain criteria, such as being enrolled in high school, or having a high school degree or GED equivalent, and not having a serious criminal conviction. And whereas many immigrant parents bring their children to the United States to provide them with greater opportunities for access to the American dream. And whereas nearly 790,000 young DACA recipients have received work permits and removal of relief through the DACA program, and those benefits can be renewed. And whereas Indiana has approximately 9,840 DACA recipients. And whereas immigrants have accounted for 27% of the Indiana's population growth between 2000 and 2015, according to a report by Ball State University's Indiana Communities Institute. It found that 320,000 to 326,000 immigrants have come to our state over the 15-year period. And whereas the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy has reported that DACA-eligible immigrants in Indiana paid approximately $23,288 million in state and local taxes in 2016. And whereas DACA is popular with the public and enjoys the support of employers, educators, community leaders, and elected officials from both parties. According to a morning consultant and political poll in April 2017, 78% of American support giving Dreamers legal permanent status. And whereas the Development Relief and Education for Alien Minors, in quotes, Dream Act has been introduced on multiple occasions in Congress and has failed to gain majority support. And whereas, according to the Mitigation Policy Institute, as many as 2.31 million individuals would qualify under the Dream Act, undoubtedly, some of those individuals will be Hammond residents. And whereas on November 12, 2019, the United States Supreme Court heard oral arguments on the lawfulness of the Trump administration's determination of the DACA program. And whereas the city of Hammond has residents who benefit from the DACA program. Now, therefore be it resolved by the mayor of the city of Hammond, as well as the common council, that they condemn President Donald Trump's rescission of DACA and supports the Dream Act. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the common council urge the President of the United States to take affirmative steps to develop a bipartisan pathway to citizenship for Dreamers. And be it further resolved that the mayor and common council direct the city clerk to transmit copies of this resolution to the President and Vice President of the United States, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, the Minority Leader of the House of Representatives, the Majority Leader of the United States Senate, the Minority Leader of the United States Senate, Congressman Peter Wiskowski, Senator Michael Braun, and Senator Todd Young, to encourage those persons to see the objects and purpose of this sense of the mayor and city of Hammond Common Council are achieved.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
As I look at the front row on that side of the thing, I've known Alberto Ochoa for about four years now. He introduced me to, introduced me to Martha, who was involved in some, in the pageant that we had a couple of years ago. And then the next year, she, she was the one that helped the new pageant contestants. Always impressed me. I found out later on that she's actually a DACA person, which actually never made any difference to me. She's a fine lady. I know. I also met Alfredo and Linda, and I'm very, I'm very proud to be part of the HUGS organization, and I'm glad that you guys asked me on. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I certainly want to applaud our former president, Barack Obama, excuse me, and also Congressman Wiskowski, for his contributions and his effort of making our nation a better place. I think we all should stand for a round of applause for this.
Councilman Torres.
I would like to suspend the rules, but I have a question. Do I have to wait for roll call and then suspend the rules to have some of the audience speak that would like to speak on this? Or do I do it before the roll call?
You have to make a motion.
Make a motion?
Oh, well, you know, we're still under discussion, so however you want to handle it.
Mr. President, I make the motion. We suspend the rules.
Mosted by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Torres to suspend the rules. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Councilman Torres.
The mic is open to anybody that would like to speak.
Keep it kind of brief, to like two minutes. Councilman Calwinski. Please give your name.
Thank you. My name is Linda Angiano. I've been here many times, and you've heard from me many times. I am a lifetime resident of Hammond, except when I moved away for school and work. I am of Mexican descent. I'm third generation, first person to go to college in my family. And I have a lot to say, and I've tried to condense it, because I used to be a speechwriter, so I know how this goes. I think we live in very dangerous times right now. We have the... We have the rescission of DACA by the president. We have an appointment of very conservative Supreme Court justices that are currently reviewing DACA, and there's rumor that they're going to reverse it. And we also have a lot of shenanigans going on in the political process. So it's very important at this time. We need legal action. We have a large number of people in support of this across the country and here in this room. You don't usually see such a big crowd. Most of these people are here because of this resolution, and they feel they want to support it whether they speak up or not. We need legal action. We need strong community support, and we need strong statements. And I believe that this resolution that we've worked on for nearly three years is a very strong statement and that it will go far. I think it's a first step. It's a first step to that path to citizenship and comprehensive immigration reform, and I know that you aren't responsible for that, but writing letters to our representatives in Washington is a big statement. Hammond is the fifth-largest city in the state of Indiana, and we have a very large active Latino population. Absent tonight are a few businesspeople who support DACA, who couldn't be here because they have businesses. One is Maria Gutierrez, who hosts, who owns with her husband Antonio Los Alteños. We also had Raimundo Garcia, who owns El Taca Real, who couldn't be here. And there are many other businesses who support DACA. My pledge is to empower and support Latinos. My pledge is to register more Latino voters. My pledge is to get out more Latinos to vote. So many of them have been afraid or felt that they were, what is the word, you know, outside of the system. They were disenfranchised. Where they came from is very politically hot, and it's dangerous to take certain actions like vote or register to vote. I believe that it's important that we recognize there were nearly 34% of Hammond residents in 2010 were Latinos. And with the new census, we'll probably see over 40,000, or 40%, not 40,000, but 40% of the Hammond residents Latino. I would like to give a special thanks to the mayor for sponsoring this. After he had issues with it, and we tried to get it through before, we worked. Our group is Progressive Democrats of America and other sister organizations. We also appreciate Alfredo's donated time and his expertise. He's an immigration attorney. He knows firsthand what these poor people are going through. They struggled to get here, and then they're put in cages separated from their children, babies separated from their mothers, and the people who work in those detention centers can't even touch them? This is outrageous. And this is just the first step to rectifying a lot of the wrongs that are going on. No, it's not going to change the world, but it's a step, a first step. So I'd also like to thank Councilman Anthony Higgs for the first to introduce and sponsor this resolution. And I know you're outgoing, and so I want to thank you because...
I ain't going nowhere.
Outgoing of the city council. But you have always spoken up for the little people, and I appreciate that. And there's been a lot of controversy in the paper and in the city council, and you're uniquely qualified in your communication style, but I really appreciate how you've spoken up for the little people. I totally support Pete Torres. He has been there for us, meeting after meeting, behind the scenes, trying to help us, trying to guide us, giving us advice, telling us how it would work. And he is an unheralded champion of the Latinos in Hammond. I'd also would like to thank the members of the Progressive Democrats of America, the Calumet Region, and all of the union representatives who are here. For we know that Latinos contribute to our income, to our tax base, they contribute to the family stability, to, and stability within the community, and with education, with the right to an education, they will contribute even more unprecedented, unheralded contributions. Immigrants are the hardest-working people. I know because my grandparents were immigrants. And in closing, I'd like to also commend and give a special thanks to those Dreamers who are willing to speak up and show up in public and talk in public and be unafraid of the consequences. And of their success in college. I know so many Dreamers who couldn't come tonight because they have two jobs so that they can go to school, or they're helping their parents. And I know so many Dreamers who are so afraid that their parents won't be there when they get home from work, that their parents will get deported. So my next segue is to introduce to you one of the bravest Dreamers, one of the bravest DACA recipients I know. And I'd appreciate an applause for Martha Gallegos.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Martha Gallegos. I am a student at Purdue University Northwest here in Hammond. I'm in my junior year, majoring in political science with a minor in public policy administration and in Spanish. I am also a resident of Hammond, and I've lived here in Hammond for almost my entire life. I came to the United States when I was only six months old. As a first-generation immigrant, a first-generation college student and DACA recipient, I want to make a difference in my community. Life as an undocumented immigrant has made me face many challenges that push me to work hard every single day. My main motivation has always been my parents, whom I owe everything to for all the sacrifices they've done and continue to do for me. As a young undocumented Latina, I live to give back to my community by advocating for undocumented youth, women empowerment, and immigration rights. Through community service, I learned the importance of giving back and being part of my community, which is a key element for my future. I believe that it is also important to support DACA and the Dream Act because it is an essential force needed to empower and continue the future growth of not only our community but the entire U.S. So I ask that you pass this resolution. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I am Mara Candelaria Reardon, the 12th District State Representative. I'm also a Hammond business owner. I rise in support of this resolution. The 2012 Deferred Action for Child Arrivals Program, or the DACA Program as it's known, this, this resolution, and particularly, I want to thank Councilman Torres and Councilman Higgs for being so tenacious and working so diligently for many years, building support in the face of executive opposition. No matter the reason or the timing, this ordinance sends the appropriate message to those currently serving in Congress and those seeking to serve in Congress, that our immigrant community comes here to contribute to our cities, our states, and our country. El mensaje es sencillo. Los inmigrantes en este país vienen a trabajar y a contribuir. Y los niños de estos inmigrantes no deben sufrir por las acciones de sus padres, porque quisieron darles oportunidades a sus hijos. Thank you, and I applaud your efforts tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Janine Harrison. I live in Highland, Indiana. I'm an English professor who has about 27 years of experience teaching at Purdue University Northwest and Calumet College of St. Joseph. And I looked up the statistics yesterday, and if you looked at Purdue Northwest, Calumet College, and IUN, approximately 23% of those undergraduate populations are Latinx. And I've taught Dreamers in the past, and, and the sad fact is, only about 5% of DACA recipients, or Dreamers, I should say, who attempt college actually graduate. And, and with DACA, you know, they are working two to three jobs while carrying a full class load. And while DACA is not a requirement in order for them to go to college, it does facilitate their ability to afford it. So I can't imagine what it would be like to have spent four-plus years of my life having basically slaved over books and worked menial jobs to be able to graduate and then be told that there's no DACA, no roadway to citizenship, and, and have, and not be able to, to engage in the profession that you studied for. So we have approximately 10,000 Dreamers in, in Indiana, and I think only 8,000 or 9,000 are DACA holders, but about 11,000 are eligible. And, and with, with Trump, the efforts he's done to dismantle the program, you know, the rates have become lower. But we've also had three years of students who were eligible to have DACA, not be able to work or, or during those years. So I just think that this is, you know, is imperative, especially since a lot of them are like, is it Martha or? Martha. Are like Martha and who, who only remember the United States and could be a viable part of Indiana's future instead of a part of our brain drain. So, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion to go regular order of business. I so move.
Evening, everyone. I'll keep it short and sweet. My name is Mike Swiger. I live at 6730 Huron Avenue, here in Hammond. I'm a second-generation Hammond resident, third-generation American. I earned my college degree right here in Hammond, CCSJ. And DACA seems to me that it's a reiteration of words that came long ago. In fact, words that came before our Constitution was ratified. Words that are on a copper tablet held by a lady standing in a harbor, the Statue of Liberty. Words that say, bring us, you're tired, you're poor, you're huddled masses yearning to breathe free. And supporting DACA is to remember who we are and where we have come from and what this land stands for. Thank you, and good night.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question. I have a question. Will people be able to speak about this in the public presentation?
If they're signed up, they sign the sheet.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we go back to the regular order of business. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Warpe. We'll go back to the regular order of business. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Roll call, please, on Resolution R. 34.
Clerk Golick.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes, yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpe.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
Item D, Resolution 19R-35, sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. A declaratory resolution designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond be established as the 24 Marble Street Economic Revitalization Area, to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the, to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for final passage and adoption of 19R-35-35.
Most by Councilman Torres, second by? Councilwoman Torres for final passes and adoption of 19R-35. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Before I bring, I think the mayor's ready to speak on it, but Africa Tarver, the Director of Economic Development, to it, very excited about this resolution because it's a declaratory resolution to bring possible business to the city of Hammond, meatpacking business. And it's located in an area that is not developed in North Hammond, 24 Marble. It's going to be 150,000 square feet. It's going to generate over 100, approximately 150 jobs. It's over a $20 million investment, and so on, so on. So I'm very excited about this, and Mayor is ready to speak on it.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Torres. Mr. President, can I speak on this? I want to thank Councilman Torres for bringing this up. As everybody knows, we do get a lot of interest from businesses in Illinois looking to come to Indiana for tax purposes. Hammond is an ideal location because they want to be as close as they can to their market, which a lot of times is in Chicago proper, but at the same time, they get all the tax advantages and employee benefits of being a Hoosier business. So in this case, 24 Marble Street is not a piece of property I bet a lot of people in our city have ever been to. It's literally on the state line. The only way you could get to 24 Marble Street is by going over railroad tracks, and I think most people, when they go over the railroad tracks, think that they're in Illinois, but you're still barely in Indiana. But 24 Marble Street is, it's about as dilapidated as a piece of property as you can get. It's literally ground zero. So when we assign a value to this piece of property with the, with the move that Councilman Torres is attempting to make, we're literally starting from scratch, which is good for purposes of down the road, if a $20 million company does come to that location and they need benefits, we'd be able to provide them to them, and eventually, this could be employing hundreds of people, paying thousands in assessed values worth of taxes. And it's a piece of property that's not generating any revenue for us as we speak, no jobs at all as we speak. So I think this is a real good move. I support this move. I appreciate Councilman Torres for bringing this up, and I hope you guys support it as well, because I think it's very realistic, within the next year, to see a $20 million company relocating to this piece of property and making a positive out of something that's been negative. My entire administration, I don't think there's been anything productive done at this piece of property, so this is a real exciting proposal for the administration.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
There has to be a, a follow-up to this resolution with, which is called a confirmatory resolution. So I'd like to set up a public meeting, a hearing, public hearing for January the 13th, which is our next council meeting.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpe.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Resolution 19R-35 passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
Item E. Resolution 19-36, a petition of Moynihan Capital LLC for variance of use from zoning ordinance to allow a parking lot for a residential facility in an R-1 youth, single-family urban residential district located at 5948 Park Place within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana. And that resolution is 19R-36, sponsored by Councilman, no.
No sponsorship.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
The clerk has two documents.
Two separate ones, different.
This one is separate?
19R-36 is supposed to be?
Councilman Higgs.
Oh, 36. I have the resolution first, the clerk will correct his error. Resolution 19R-36, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, a resolution to reappoint Gregory Mirex to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passes of Resolution 19R-36. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passes and adoption of 19R-36. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Greg has been on the redevelopment commission for nine years, and he's done a very good job. He's in the audience now, if anybody has any questions for him, I'm sure he'll come up to the mic.
I don't know if anyone has any questions, but, Mr. President, and to the council, I was here, I stood here in December 2010. An outgoing third district councilman sponsored me for this position, and the council so graciously appointed me. But, you know, I left here that evening, and I went home and I talked to my wife. I was like, "I don't know what the hell Higgs got me into, but, you know, I'm gonna do my civic duty and do it for a year." Well, it's been quite a while, so, quite a while. So, it's been an honor and a privilege to have served, and if it's your will, I'll be honored, I'll be honored and privileged to serve again. And if not, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm standing here for you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I sentiment the echoes of Gregory Mirex in regards to being appointed to the redevelopment commission. He's someone that I felt would do the job and get it done, and I think he's done a wonderful job, and I would hope, in the future, that you continue to do a great job for the city of Hammond and the residents of the third district.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Mayor McDermott.
When I took over as mayor 16 years ago, the redevelopment commission has five members, three appointed by the mayor, two appointed by the council, and it was typical of every meeting, every vote that faced the redevelopment commission was knock-down, drag-out, and almost every vote that they took was a three-to-two vote. We swore, I swore, when I took over as mayor, that I would work closer with the council appointees and try to eliminate that. And I don't know if this makes you happy or not, but most of the votes on the redevelopment commission are five-zero, because they're all working together. I think, I know who the appointees of the mayor's office and who the appointees of the council office are, but I don't think anybody in the audience could tell who represents what, because they're all working together for the best interests of our city. Greg is a part of that. I think he's done a heck of a job, and for what it's worth, you know, I support him for what it's worth. So, I think he's done a great job, and I just wanted to come up here and say that on his behalf. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, resolution passes nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Item 11, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Item A.
No, it's new and unfinished business.
Here's another 1936, but this is the ordinance. A petition of Moynihan Capital LLC for variance of use from zoning ordinance to allow a parking lot for a residential facility in an R-1U, single-family urban residential district located at 5948 Park Place, within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I thought we were under new and unfinished business, but however, however you choose to run the meeting is fine with me, but I move for final passes, I guess, of Resolution 1936. Mr. President.
Ordnance.
Mr. President. On the agenda, it's all screwed up.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
For 19-36. Councilman Warple.
I guess my thing is a point of order, I guess.
State your point of order.
We need to suspend the rules to pass this, right, under new and unfinished business?
I'm not sure. There's been confusion tonight that we've had two with that same ordinance number or resolution number, 19R-36 and 19.
That's, one's a resolution, this is an ordinance that's under new and unfinished business, so I'm taking, I'm making a motion to suspend the rules and pass this.
Second. Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Torres for suspension of the rules.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Point of order is that it should be passed on first and second reading, and then suspend the rules, and then pass it on third and final.
I don't think you need to suspend the rules. It's on the agenda.
But we got, Berger, we got two, he's right, with 19R-36, so which one are we going by?
One does not have an R, right?
Oh, 13, 1936, okay. That's fine with me, fine.
Somebody introduce 19-36.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Ordinance 1936, I move on first and second reading by title, and refer to council as a whole. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by?
Second.
Councilman Spatelli for 19-36 be passed on first and second reading, refer to council as a whole.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
If we intend on passing this tonight, it shouldn't be referred to a committee, correct?
Not necessarily. You can still make the motion. Somebody could take a.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I can rescind putting it in committee. Brian is here, so if he needs to speak on it, I think they want to get it passed tonight. It's simply trying to make space for a parking, which happens to be in, by Harrison Park, so that the residents can park appropriately. That's from my understanding. Berger, is there any thing that's missing, attorney?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
Any discussion? Clerk Golick.
Is this on first and second, or is this on?
No, this is a motion to pass it on first and second reading.
You want to roll call on first and second?
All they need to do is approve the variance.
Forget it.
Mr. President, you want to roll call on first and second? No, just a motion, passage of first and second.
Mr. President.
We already motioned.
All you need to do is approve the variance on this.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the variance on this.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by?
Second.
Councilwoman Vines, that 19-36 be approved as a variance. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor McDermott.
I could tell you that this has been a long process for the investors in this piece of property. It's gone through zoning, the BZA, it's gone through planning. It was held up for a number of meetings in the planning department over concerns about putting more people in this neighborhood and not having adequate parking for it. We've gone back and forth with these gentlemen a number of times, and finally came upon an acceptable conclusion, in our opinion. It passed through the planning committee, and it's presented to you guys now. I'm just concerned if we bounce it for another meeting, it's just a little bit longer for these gentlemen that want to get to work and start developing this piece of property. Like I said, and obviously, the council could do whatever it wants, you're the council, you know, if you want to delay another meeting, I get that. However, these investors have been through quite a lot, through the city departments, and, so, I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Call for the vote.
Is there any other discussion? Discussion, discussion?
Mr. President. We're voting to approve the variance, right?
Yes.
There'll be no third and final reading needed after this. We approved the variance. Thank you.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Under new and unfinished business, I just want to point out, Burns Act Code and 9-181 and 2 and 7, it says the Burns, Indiana statute-appointed Title IX motor vehicles. It says, number one, has illegal residence in the state that it is contingent to Indiana, and, two, owns and operates a vehicle that is registered in accordance with the law of the other states of legal residence, may operate a vehicle on the highway for not more than 60 days without registering the vehicle under this article. That means that all the residents that moved to our great city that have not, I repeat, changed their plates are violating the law in our city. And that happens far too often in some areas within my district especially. So, I look forward to bringing these issues of such up to the council in the future, because I will be at the meetings.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I'd like to make a motion, even though it's not on the agenda, we don't need it in paper form, I'd like to make a motion that this council reappoint Dennis Rodowski to the BZA. Our council appointment is up January 6th, and I'd like to make the motion, we reappoint Dennis Rodowski.
Point of order.
Second.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
We're under new and unfinished business. He has to make a motion to suspend the rules to go to.
No, we're under new and unfinished business. That's what he's doing. He's making an appointment. We discussed that in caucus.
That's not the way it's properly done.
It is the way it's properly done, and I make a motion. Yes, it is. I make a motion that we reappoint Dennis Rodowski to the BZA. It's been seconded.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakels to appoint Dennis Rodowski to the BZA. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mr. Warple, Councilman Warple, how long has he been on the BZA?
I don't know. When did you guys appoint him? You've been here longer than me.
I don't recall appointing him. I didn't sponsor it, Councilman Warple. So, I'm asking you, since you're sponsoring it.
I'm making a motion to put him on the BZA. I don't know, I can't answer that question.
That's fine. Is it anything, his qualifications, you know, if he have any qualifications for this particular?
Mr. President, is he addressing me or the chairs?
Councilman Higgs, you will address the president if you want to talk.
President.
I've been giving you enough leeway tonight. You know, we're following the rules, and you're sort of like making a mockery of all of this, okay? You've been questioning anything and everything tonight, whether it has anything to do with anything tonight. So, please, address the chair, and have some respect for your fellow councilmen. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I have no problem with that. I'm simply trying to get an answer to my question. In all due respect, I've dealt with a number of issues. Should I reflect on them? Sitting 16 years on this council has not been an easy job, being the only African-American. So, when you talk about respect, I can go and name a number of issues. However, I choose not to go there tonight. So, don't act as though I'm being out of place, or being disrespectful, because that's not even in my character. Neither have I been raised in such. And I have a problem with that.
Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Clerk Golick.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Thank you so much, Councilman Markovich. First and foremost, I would like to thank all my colleagues that I had the opportunity to work with over the last 16 years. It hasn't been an easy ride, however, God is able to keep you in the midst of it all. Without Him, I could not have done it. For that, I give Him all praise and glory. Secondly, I would like to thank all my constituents and all the residents of the great city of Hammond for allowing me an opportunity to represent you all, because it wasn't just about me, it was about the entire city. I will continue to fight and do what's necessary to move this city forward. God bless each and every one of you. I wish you all the best. I have no envy or dislike to none of you all. However, I wish you the best. May God continue to keep you, is my prayer.
Mayor McDermott.
Councilman Markovich, I wanted to congratulate you as well on a great career. You've served a number of terms on the Hammond City Council, this last year as the president. I think you've handled it very well. You and I personally have had our ups and downs over the years, but I always respected you and your knowledge for the city of Hammond. I know this is your last meeting, and I know Councilman Higgs just gave us his going-away salutation, and I wanted to stand up and congratulate you as well, as Councilman Higgs, on a great career. And Councilman Markovich, you served through three mayors, I believe, my father, Mr. Ruskowski, you know, excuse me, my father, Mr. Diddelaw, and myself, and I want to congratulate you on a great career. You've got to be one of Hammond's longest-serving councilmen-at-large, so congratulations on a great career. I wish you well in the future, Councilman Higgs. I wish you well in the future as well.
You as well, Mayor. Thank you.
I would just like to say, and, so I don't get too emotional, but I guess that's going to happen. I guess going through 32 budget meetings, 768 council meetings, over 1,000 committee meetings, 1,000 of phone calls. But I'd like to say one instance what happened on a phone call when I first got in. I get a call at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. This Councilman Markovich, I go, "Yeah, but this is so-and-so." And my street light in the alley's out. I says, "Oh." He says, "What are you going to do about it?" I says, "Well, you know, give me the, if there's a poll number or whatever, if it's a Nippsco Poll City, give me the location, the address." So, he gave it to me, and, you know, then I called the street department, talked to them about it, you know, and, you know, said it has to be taken care of. So, I called them up and asked the street department when it was fixed, and they told me it was okay, the light was on. I went there and checked myself to make sure the light was on, so, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, I called this individual that called me about the street light. And I says, "Yeah, this is Councilman Markovich." I says, "I just want to know if your street light's on, you know, to let me know, because you called about it." So, I always remember that and won't forget that. But, you know, you get a lot of calls, you know, cats that's stuck in the tree, what am I going to do, and so forth, and all of that. And, you know, it has some good points and bad points. Thank my wife and family for putting up with me, my brothers, fellow councilmen mayors. The only thing is, if you're a mayor, they name a street after you while you're still alive. I don't know if they're going to name a street after me, but they only named a street after councilmen when they died, so I hope that doesn't happen to me. So, you know, enjoy it, and good luck to my colleagues. Appreciate the citizens of Hammond, department heads. You know, it comes with some good points and bad points. It's, you know, it's not going to be on the right side or the wrong side, but you want to represent the people, and that's what you try to do. I'm not going to get into things that happen because of the way things go, but the next council meeting will be January 13th, 2020. It'll be my son's birthday, so at least I'll be home for that. I know I missed several council meetings on January the 13th in the past where it was[1757.11] it was his birthday. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. December thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, my mother died thirty-six years ago, so I just want to wish everybody happy birth, Merry Christmas. But that was thirty-six years ago that she passed away. And I know they say that Christmas is supposed to be the joyous of times, but it's also the sadness of times because when you have your Christmas meal, there's going to be people there that's not there, that you're going to be missing, that were all those years. So again, I want to just thank everybody, and I guess I'm doing pretty good with my composure, but, uh, I guess I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, just to echo, echo a little bit of that, I mean, the phone calls never stop, but it's part of the territory. And when you love people and you have a desire to just serve the public, it comes with the territory. And again, thank you, Mayor, because I learned a lot. We didn't always get along, and we did not always agree with everything, but you gave me an opportunity to learn some things and learn people around me as well. So for that, I am appreciative of, and I wish you the best in your career in depth. God bless you all.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tarzan.
I too would like to congratulate you, and, you know, it's hard enough getting elected for one term, and to get elected for eight consecutive term, uh, like you stated before, that's almost half of your lifetime is quite an accomplishment, so congratulations. Councilman Higgs, same thing, same thing to you. You served sixteen years, um, and I know you always spoke up for your district and doing what you thought was best for your constituents and the district. So congratulations to both of you and wish you the best in whatever your future endeavors are.
Mr. President.
Councilman Swinski.
The first district appreciates your fortitude, participation, and service to all the people in our district. You're going to be missed. We appreciate your willingness to get out there, speak your mind, take the hits, and continue to move forward. Your resilience is just outstanding. Thank you for your service.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
This goes, uh, to both you and Councilman Higgs. I've known you guys both a long time to do what you guys have done, number one, for thirty-two years, and know what you're getting into. I did something for thirty-seven years, and I swear, I used to swear that there's no way I'm ever going to regret leaving this place, and that happened about three days after I left. But, uh, we've been, both of us, all three of us have not always seen eye to eye, but you guys have been nothing but gentlemen with me in my dealings with you, and I just both commend you both on your service to the city of Hammond.
Mr. President. Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to say the same thing, both of you, is it's not easy to sit up here, folks. We have to make decisions for things, be there with what they've been doing. Uh, everybody has a different personality, but I want to wish both of them the best, and it was good serving with them.
I'd just like to say. Councilman Emerson.
Um, again, you know, Anthony, Councilman Higgs and I have worked together on, on some projects, and, uh, I, I will never forget the night I won my election. Uh, I got, later I got letters from Congressman Vuskowski and everybody wishing, wishing you well. The only person to call me on that night was our president, Bob Markovich, and, and he really just called to say, hey, you know, congratulations. But I, I just never forgot that, and, uh, it's been good working with you both. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, you see a lot of presidents, you know, Jimmy Carter, and a couple of them, Barack Obama, when they get in there, but when they get out, how they aged and the stress.
You got younger.
You know, they, they, they still had their hair, but it wasn't dark anymore. It was white or whatever, and, uh, you know, I, I'm glad I still have my hair. It's going away a little bit, but it's white. And, uh, like I said, you can just see it, and it's a lot of stress and everything and all of that, but you have to enjoy it too. And, uh, I know a lot of times when I'd be at home, my wife would say, don't you have someplace to go to or a meeting or what the hell or whatever, you know? And she's already saying, well, what are you going to do, you know? Aren't you going to get out of the house or whatever? And, you know, we'll see whatever happens in that respect. Again, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Good luck to the both of you. I'd also like to announce that January first, at eleven AM at the, uh, Hammond Sportsplex, there'll be a swearing-in ceremony for Katrina Alexander, Barry Tyler Jr., and myself. All are welcome. That's, uh, the swearing-in will be on January first at eleven AM at the sportsplex. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adjourn from this.
No, 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 we've got public expression. Now, you've got to listen to them like they listen to you. Nobody wants to use the time clock, you know? We have three minutes, and, uh, you know, it's a tough job to, when people come here and talk. First one is Duncan Murphy. Could you please go to the microphone and give your name and address?
I brought some graphs. I wanted to talk about solar energy, uh, solar initiative, I think.
Would you just speak into the microphone, please?
I wanted to talk about, uh, solar initiative for the city of Hammond. I brought some graphs, uh, so if you could, uh, do these, uh, illustrate some of the things I want to talk about. Uh, I know you said I only have, uh, three minutes. I have a short, uh, piece here written, uh, I prepared beforehand. Uh, if you'll just allow me to read it completely, I'd appreciate that greatly. Uh, this is to the city of Hammond. Uh, I want to talk to you, uh, I titled this, uh, Power and Energy in the Modern World. Uh, power and energy needs for humanity are growing every day. A solution to this is cultivating some of the, uh, solar energy emanating from the sun. Several decades ago, technological innovations allowed for the creation of devices, uh, solar panels, for example, uh, that cultivate energy from the sun. Solar panels can be stored in the form of electricity for use by humanity. Almost seemingly as a byproduct of the discovery of electricity, more and more technological innovations utilize electricity as a power source. This foretells of a future that humanity uses electricity for their uses more directly from the stars than indirectly through lesser energy sources, uh, such as fossil fuels. I deplore you, city of Hammond, do not be found sinking into a stagnant pool of mire. I would much rather see my city move towards a future that the city is the one upon the hill, one of progress in truly pursuing the American dream. Achievement of this goal, solution is now so simple. Affordability of the technological innovations can put them into the hands of Americans. One, I would see the city no longer dependent upon fossil fuels and relying instead upon solar energy cultivated with solar panels and other solar, solar energy cultivation devices. The solar energy can be stored in great amounts in batteries whose mass consists of carbon packed together by heat and pressure to form the tightest bonds at the atomic level. These structures are commonly called diamonds, lesser gemstones, have capabilities similar to diamonds for practicality and purpose. From my understanding, it's become more and more commonplace for people to be utilizing these solar panels as they are quite effective at cultivating solar energy emanating from the stars. Power and utility companies powering our area are continuing to use fossil fuels as their sources for energy. As an individual with property and or home in our community can have a solar panel installed at their, uh, homes. When I first heard of solar panels, an accompanying statistic was given with knowledge that on average, the panels, uh, would in contrast to no longer paying their, uh, the person's monthly bill, electricity bill, the solar panels and installation costs would be paid off for a person who uses power in amounts close to that national average in about ten years. I would like to say here to buy American so that your solar panel is built to last a lifetime. So accompanying this made would now be a future where the individual has a device that covers their power and energy needs for their homes, maybe even their vehicle and their appliances. This future will allow them to have more dollars in their pockets because they will not only have to pay their, not have to pay their monthly electricity bill anymore. At this point, I would, uh, have you also note that many power and utility companies will, with the given being that your home is connected to the power grid, by any power excess of your needs, your personal solar panel cultivates. A plan for the future. Additionally, I say to you that two steps should be done to achieve this first goal. The city of Hammond should install solar panels on public and municipal buildings for no other reason but the monetary savings that allow for the continued expansion and progression of the city. The creation of a solar energy farm would serve purpose to provide the energy and power needs of the city. The second step would be to offer to the citizens of the city a subsidy, perhaps a tax credit like the federal government already currently offers for solar energy cultivation devices, as an initiative to entice people to obtain their own solar panels. This, as aforementioned, while initial tightening, the budget to the people will in the future allow the people to have more money, and thus will allow people to spend more money on the things they want at local businesses, thus boosting the local economy of the city. As simple as this plan is, I hope that it speaks more to its effectiveness. As this goals, it's fundamental to building a prosperous and progressive society. Providing basic amenities to the people has always been historically helped to empower the people and then thus in turn the city. A democratic republic is not greater than the people. I would hope that if not in the wisdom of empowering the people, the city of Hammond would do these things for the monetary savings that we found in enacting this plan, as I have stated. Following through with this plan and enacting these policies to make the city of Hammond a shining example of how great we, humanity as a community, can be by working together towards a goal of a free, prosperous society of America. I would also like to talk more, uh, some details.
You've already used, uh, your time. If you're looking for that, I would say that you refer that to the engineering department to have them look at that as far as solar energy here in the city.
I just wanted to tell you, there is a solar, uh, company here in northwest Indiana called Midwest Wind and Solar. They, uh, have done many projects in our area, and I think that, uh, it would be very beneficial to the city of Hammond if they contracted them for, uh, the public and municipal buildings and for residential and commercial buildings in our city. I can tell you a lot more information about national averages, uh, some costs detailed. Uh, you see on, uh, graph two, you see, uh, with the subsidy and the current federal investment tax credit that we could effectively cut the cost to residents in the city, uh...
Duncan, again, I would say that you can refer this to the engineering department. Take it further. You've had your three minutes. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Uh, I just, we really like, uh, all the consequences to really take this under consideration as I see it. If not, uh...
I hear you get your point across.
Several reasons, but the monetary savings will be, allow for many other great public works and other municipal needs.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Tim Ramien.
Tim Ramien, seventy-one forty-two Carolina. Uh, I was going to talk about, uh, people talking on cell phones, but, uh, I think that's not appropriate for this forum. I'm going to talk to the police officers on Thursday at, uh, Gene Shepherd Center and see what's, uh, uh, they're going to do about it. Because on, on my way here, I saw seven people talking on their phones, driving their cars. And, uh, if we can find these people, this is money that's going to go into the coffers of the, of the city. Um, I think it's dangerous, and I think it should be looked into. Um, so like I said, I'm going to talk to the officers on Thursday and, uh, see what they have to say. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
B. Moto, ninety-five hundred West Brainerd Mar Avenue, Rosemont. Elizabeth Palacio. Forty-one twenty-four Wig Street.
Hi, counsel. Thank you, uh, for hearing me. Um, this is for all of you and, uh, especially for Mr. Rakos. Thank you all for, uh, being here. Uh, your service, um, is very much appreciated. I was wondering, Mr. Rakos, if you received the resolution of gun violence, uh, for prevention for the city? Um, this has passed, this resolution has passed in Gary, Highland, Valparaiso, South Bend, Bloomington, and, um, hopefully, um, Bloomington and also Lake County, the Lake County Council. We're hoping that Hammond will, um, be on the list also. We would like you to send a message, we'd like to send a message to Washington DC that we do not have to stay silent. Saturday was the seven-year anniversary of Sandy Hook. Uh, since that, thousands more children and family members and people have been killed with gun violence. Please do something so our children don't have to go through this, whether it's a missing parent or the parent is missing their child. Um, we're depending on you, we're depending on you to make this great decision, um, and also that our children are depending on us to put pressure on you. Thank you very much.
Marla Candelary Reardon.
She left.
David Tuspin, seventy-four fourteen Howard. Turpin?
Good evening, counsel. Um, first of all, I've been authorized by the Unión Benefica Mexicana, the UBM, to express our organizations into the Essex support for Resolution nineteen R thirty-four, supporting DACA. Uh, I wanted to say that UBM has a long history in the region of representing the Mexican-American community in northwest Indiana. Its roots reach deep into Mexico's tradition of people-to-people solidarity, as well as into our own traditions of neighbors supporting neighbors and welcoming new neighbors. Taking a stand as part of these youth, urging our national government to act to overcome the injustice of forcing young Americans to hide in the shadows when they are ready to shine is urgently needed, and I salute the decision of the council to pass this resolution. Speaking for myself and as an activist, a member of the Progressive Democrats of America, not necessarily as a member of UBM, although I think some of my fellow members share my sentiments, I would like to say quite frankly that I thought this decision should have been taken sooner. It should have come to a vote, but we've moved past this regrettable delay, and there will be more opportunities to do the right thing in a timely fashion because the crisis continues, as we can all see in, and daily in the news, and even in the case of children in cages, et cetera. Now, it may, it occurs to me that some local leaders may feel that national issues such as DACA or more generally the injustice of our country's current immigration policy, which effectively terrorizes millions of good people, are beyond the scope of their official duties. I think such reasoning is parochial. It is not leadership required, even at the local level, in the face of a crisis that affects, hurts our community and others. The Council of Hammond obviously cannot pass legislation that defies state and national, national law. This, there is no doubt. But this particular bully pulpit, though its reach be limited, is our voice to represent the needs of our community to the nation, as well as to educate neighbors who may not understand the gravity of the crisis, and to reassure those who feel most acutely the fear instilled by demagogic politicians who seek to build their careers on repression of the most vulnerable and to profit from hysteria. Now, to act in a timely manner is the most, most important in the face of any crisis. And, uh, I think also I want to emphasize something else. We, we, we expect, we will be back with further resolutions, giving the council opportunity to act in a timely manner, and we expect those leaders who rise to higher post to use their new positions to advance the fight to defend our community. And I will close with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Oh, my God.
From his, uh, text, Why We Can't Wait. Time itself is neutral. It can be used either destructively or constructively. More and more, I feel that the people of ill will have used time much more effectively than have the people of goodwill. We will have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people. Human progress never rolls in on the wheels of inevitability. It comes through the tireless efforts of those willing to work to be coworkers with God, and without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally of the forces of social stagnation. We must use time creatively and the knowledge that the time is always ripe to do right. Thank you.
Carl Wolf.
Thank you. My name's Carl Wolf. I, uh, live at seventy-one twenty-eight Monroe in Hammond. Um, so, want to have to follow David. He's much more profound than I'll, than I'll ever be, but whatever the case. Um, I do want to thank the council and the mayor for passing this resolution, uh, to support the Dreamers and DACA, and, uh, it's something that, um, we did as a, as a collective fight long and hard for. I was, um, I was remembering that the time of, of our original, uh, or my original, anyway, approach, there was a lot of concern regarding the loss of CDBG funding and the attention that the city of Hammond would get from the federal government, um, if we passed this resolution. I remember that there was a lot of, uh, talk about how that the, the city was not really, wasn't their, their place to get involved in federal politics, and I guess I'm glad that that's changed. changed. Um, I lost my phone here. I can't read my speech anymore. Um, I'm glad that's changed. Um, sorry. So despite our, um, breakfasting and lobbying and arguing and harassing the council and the mayor and getting, uh, getting all, having all that fun time, it was not to be at that time. And so I'm, I'm glad to see, for whatever reason, there's now been a sea change in the political will of the council and the mayor. And while this resolution is very important and a great first step, I, I anticipate that the progressive forces of northwest Indiana and Hammond, Indiana, uh, will, will be back to urge this body to not just pass a resolution, but to join the city of Gary in passing an actual ordinance to protect our brothers and sisters who are, uh, in fear to call the cops if something is going on in their community, in whichever district, in Hessville or Robertsdale or in Edison, because they, they think that if they're going to call the cops, then they could be reported to ICE. And so the city of Gary, a number of ye, a couple of years ago, now passed an ordinance to say, we guarantee you that if you call the cops, we won't, we will not report you. And so I urge this body to, again, look at the language, and I, I may have it somewhat wrong. I don't know all the ins and outs of the political machinations, but I'm sure Alfredo Estrada will help to, with that, with that project next, that this council will actually do something. Um, not say you've done something. I take that back and thank you all. But, but, but to take that next step in, uh, in supporting, um, this very, very dear and important part of our community. So, thank you very much. Good luck to you all. Good luck, Con, uh, Counselman Higgs and Counselman Markovich and Congressman McDermott.
Mike Santos.
Um, I would just like to reiterate what's...
Dave, please.
Oh, sorry, Mike Santos, Hessville. Um, I would just like to reiterate what's already been said in support of the DACA resolution that passed tonight, and want to thank the city council, especially Counselman Raykos, Counselman Warple, and Counselman Torres for agreeing to sponsor it. Um, and I think I speak for many Hammond residents when I say we're glad to see it finally pass. Um, however, um, again, I think it's important to note that while tonight's resolution is a good first step, it cannot be the last. A resolution is ultimately just words on a piece of paper, if not accompanied by concrete policies. One such policy the city of Hammond could adopt is the Welcoming City Ordinance, um, of the kind that was passed by the cities of East Chicago and Gary, uh, the ones that Carl mentioned. Such ordinances have already been adopted and would implement real tangible protections for our immigrant friends and neighbors. Would the Republican supermajority in the Indiana General Assembly like it if we did that? No. Would the Trump administration like it? No. Would they fight us on it? Maybe. But some fights, I would argue, are worth having. Each of you, the mayor included, are here because your constituents believe that you come here to fight for them. It is my hope that tonight's DACA resolution will be just the first of a series of actions the city of Hammond takes to protect its immigrant community. Let's keep fighting for our immigrant neighbors. Let's pass the Welcoming City Ordinance. Thank you.
Terry Steigl. Terry Steigl, pass.
It's the first time ever Terry says he's not talking.
Janine Harrison.
She spoke already.
Scott Hollison, or...
He left.
Mike Enrique, six, seven thirty here on.
That's Mike Swiger. He spoke already.
Jose Bustos. George Stoya. I won't even time you.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. Uh, nothing much. I don't know what the state of the city is with respect to, uh, uh, the gentleman Duncan, I don't know his last name, sorry, about the solar farms, but I thought it was a good idea. I don't know to what extent we've developed, cultivated any awareness or actually implemented some sort of policy program, et cetera, et cetera. But, uh, given the tax caps, given the foreseeable future, uh, might not be a bad idea. I understand we have fallow land in the city, and, uh, solar farm sounds pretty good. Thank you.
Alvin Cheeks. I've got two and a half more minutes. Alvin Cheeks. And then Linda Igualdo.
I didn't speak after the resolution was passed. For the record, it's Angiano. Live at sixty-eight fourteen Colorado Avenue in Hessville. I wanted to speak both before and after the resolution was passed. I wanted to be real sweet and nice before. Um, I think that, uh, it's great. I'm very, very happy that the resolution was passed. Um, what I want is bold action. I think that the schools need to teach critical thinking so that kids, young people, youth, young adults, follow their inner moral compass. They don't just go along with the crowd or what's popular or what the majority wants, but to really look into their soul and what is the right thing to do. So I think that this resolution was the right thing to do, and I really don't understand, I really don't understand why the council took so long. If there was a little bit of language, they could have said that, somebody could have told us and, you know, could have fixed it years ago. And as I said earlier, my pledge is to get more Latinos registered, to vote, and to vote for candidates that acknowledge, see, hear, and listen to Latinos.
I'm gonna help you.
Awesome. And the other thing I would like to see, and some of this is in your, um, purview and some is not, to elevate Latinos to boards, to encourage them to run for the city council. There's only one woman on this board. There's two people of color, and one's leaving. We got two African-Americans coming in, one woman. That's great. But you can do more. You can recruit them. You can train them. You can mentor them. You can advise them. You could invite them on committees or whatever your responsibilities include. I would also like to acknowledge the Latino businesses who support the Latinos and hiring them. We had a terrible experience, um, in January. A Dreamer called me, and she said that her mother's best friend, who owns a restaurant in Portage, and they have another one, I think it was in Lowell, they were raided, and many people were just taken away. The restaurant had to close. Uh, kids didn't know where their parents were. Both a wife and a husband were taken. Their kids were at home with the babysitter. So I think that we really need to look at what's happening around us and take action and expand our scope of what the city council does and what it speaks up for. Maybe you do it as an individual. I think it's great to have the skate park and the sportplex, but how do low-income families and low-income kids get from the north side of Hammond over to Hessville? I mean, I could walk there, if I could walk, but how do these kids get there? We don't have a bus system. They don't have the funds. Their parents may be working. They may be babysitting for their younger siblings. So I think that we need hot, affordable housing, and we've recently learned about the master plan. And what does that do? That destroys a lot of the neighborhood and builds really beautiful apartments so that people from Chicago can come live here or recent graduates, and the rents are proposed to be nine hundred to nineteen hundred dollars. How do the, how do the Latino residents and the low-income residents of Hammond afford that? So what I'm looking for is big, bold plans, big, bold vision, do some critical thinking, and be responsible for being visionaries. Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motioned by Counselman Higgs.
And I would like to second that and also say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
All in favor, signify.
Before, there's going to be a group picture for DACA supporters of the mayor and whatever, whoever a councilman wants to be in the pictures.